I'd like to call the Danville City Commission meeting to order. This is our regular scheduled meeting. Today's date is Monday, April the 28th, 2025. The time is 4:30 PM. I want to again welcome you all and thank you for your attendance. And thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting. And for you Center College kids, we welcome you especially because you get to participate, but more importantly, you're going to get to see your city government in action. So, because the things that we do tonight will be things that are for real. And those things will impact our community. And we pray that there'll be a positive, positive impact on our community. Okay? So, we're going to start off our meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. And that's going to be led by Mr. Glenn Ball, who is a member of the Danville City School Board. And we're going to have a prayer that's going to be done by Sister Commissioner Donna Peak. Would you pray first?
Okay. Lord, I ask that you would help us to function, not as an individual, but as a team that works towards a common goal. Help us to act in love towards one another with grace and respect. Lead our thoughts, temper our words, and forgive our shortcomings as we come together to accomplish the work before us. Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ball, step up. Thank you for your service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Mr. Ball, before you turn your seat, I'll give you a little token of appreciation on behalf of the Danville City Commission. Thank you for your service. And thank you for what you're doing for our kids in the community. Next, I'd like to ask the City Commission to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, unless someone has an addition or a deletion or change. So, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Wow, the ladies are involved tonight. Okay? Any other comments, questions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our agenda is approved as presented. Next on our agenda tonight is the opportunity that we hear the public. And tonight's presentation at this time is only information or items that you're concerned about that are on our agenda. And before I recognize anyone and thank you all for your attendance, I want to remind everyone that item number one, Shakertown Road discussion, there is not a hear the public for that item. You'll understand why later on, hopefully. Okay? So, hear the public for any items on the agenda except for item number one involving a Shakertown Road discussion. Hearing none? Thank you all. Now, why did I make that statement? Those who were present last time, we took the direction from our legal attorney, the city attorney, that we were not engage in conversation with people about the Shakertown Road discussion. Okay? We are going to discuss it tonight as a commission, but we're not allowed to receive any input, further input outside of the hearing that was taking place in February, March with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay? So, the next item is for the City Commission to have a discussion about the Shakertown Road planning and zoning change that's be forwarded tonight. So...
And Mayor, once again, I'll have to state on the record that as a resident of an adjoining neighborhood, on the next matter, I'm going to have to recuse myself. And please alert me after this matter.
Should I tell you not to leave? All right. We respect you, Commissioner Holland, for that position. Okay? So, the four of us will continue in her absence. So, a discussion about the Shakertown Road discussion. I guess the first thing I'd like to say is that, so you all will all know where I'm coming from, I have taken the time, and I hope all five of us have taken the time, to review, and I think even the second one twice, all of the planning and zoning hearings that took place on this issue about Shakertown Road. Because I tried to confess last time I had not seen both of them before the last meeting. But I have completed my assignment. I've seen both of them, and I've seen part of the second one twice. So, Commissioners, any other discussions about the Shakertown Road?
I would like to say also, after the last meeting, we were asked to look at the meetings and the minutes. And I did so also. And I don't know. I mean, I think it's important to review it. I think that was important that we did that. And hopefully, everybody did that.
Yes. Any other comments? Hearing no other comments, then the Chair would like to entertain a motion about the Shakertown zone change. Our options tonight, there are three of them. One is to approve the document as presented without a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board. The second option is to deny, refuse, or not pass the document as presented. And then the third choice, our recommendation for tonight, is that we can decide to have a complete, totally new public hearing. And if you decide number three, then that means that the commission is saying to our community, we're going to start all over again. So, those are our three options. Okay? So, is there any comments about those three options? Somebody want to offer up a fourth option? If there's any discussion about what's be forwarded tonight?
I'll just speak for me as, after reviewing all of the information. And I spent, you know, probably, I don't know how many hours, four or five hours, listening and writing notes down. There were so many questions for me about the process and the answers that were given. And the minutes didn't really reflect to me what was in the meeting. I can't make a decision, you know, based on that. I think that even the commission, the P&amp;Z Commission, asked for further information and then closed the hearing. And I want to hear from other people before making a decision like that. So, my motion would be after reviewing this information, I would, I think the record's incomplete. I don't think it's a complete record and that I would need personally more information to make an informed decision that's best for the community. So, I would move that we hold a new public hearing and develop our own record in order to make a determination and further direct staff to organize the same, to organize the hearing with the proper notice with the law. And with the city attorney, of course, he has to guide the process, I do believe. That would be my motion.
Should you vote a motion?
Yes, sir.
For a hearing.
I'll second that.
Because we've properly moved in second that the City Commission wants to proceed in this matter with its own public hearing.
Yeah.
All right?
And I'm second for the same reasons as you are, Commissioner Peak. Some things did not settle well with me. I think that we need to have more information, more specifics on some of the issues that are, that are really big, like the water runoff and entrance to the facility, to the neighborhoods.
Okay. Before I carry this motion, I'm going to ask the city attorney and city manager, one or both, to outline for all of us in attendance tonight what that process is for the commission to do a public hearing.
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mayor. The statute found in Caris 100 will govern our process. We will essentially take the place of the planning commission to develop a brand-new record. And that will mean that the public hearing process will start over from ground zero. We will properly notice the hearing that will require at least 30 days' advance notice to adjacent property owners. Signs will be posted, and publication will be in the Advocate Messenger of the public hearing at least seven days before the hearing, but no greater than 21 days before the hearings with the law states. And so, staff will begin that process of scheduling the time in order to comply with those timelines afforded under the law. At the actual hearing, which I perceive will be a special call meeting of this body for this venture only to be discussed, it will start over from the beginning, meaning the hearing will follow loosely this type of procedure. The applicant will submit, or actually present the application to this body from the very beginning. And then after the application has been presented, proper questioning by the board has transpired, there is a public notice section in which people either for or against the proposed MAP amendment can speak at that time. Those comments will be properly recorded. You will only be able to consider matters that are presented at that hearing, nothing that was presented in the underlying record at the planning commission, but only the matters that are presented before you at that time. It's a brand-new hearing. And at the conclusion of that hearing, we would have an expectation that you actually make a vote in favor or against the MAP amendment. At the completion of that hearing and your vote, which will again be tied to two things per the law, the future land use map and the comprehensive plan and the goals and objectives therein, to be a legal motion. At the conclusion of that motion, we will then prepare an ordinance for your review at the next regular or special call meeting that we have of the Board of Commissioners that will require two readings, and then the process will be completed. So, that's the overview. But the synopsis is that you won't have this public hearing for approximately 45 or 60 days, so that the proper notices can be provided under the law. That's right. So, the commission has to act on this within 90 days. Failure to your, on your part to act within the 90 days serves as an approval of the amendment, of the application. In the 90-day period, we can get the exact date, but it began to run the day that the completed application was forwarded to staff by the planning commission.
That will be part of the scheduling. What we will do this week is we will work towards the calendar with that in mind to ensure that we comply with the 90-day requirement and the 30-day advertisement period, too.
And I think it's, so staff will take care of those matters under the law. And I do think it's important, as we discuss this ahead of time, that we remind you and the public of everyone's roles and responsibilities in this type of matter. This is a public hearing. It is quasi-administrative, and as such, you have different roles. You are judge and jury in this context, meaning you cannot consider any evidence that is presented outside of this chamber. So, you're reminded not to discuss this matter outside of this chamber until we have this hearing. But everyone is free to speak at the hear the public section of that meeting who desires to speak. So, they will have an opportunity to be heard. It's just at the appropriate time in the appropriate measure. My role in the process, as is always as city council, is to make sure that the process is legal and in compliance and to make sure that the commission does things in a manner in which lawsuits aren't thereafter filed, which thereafter protects the community interest. So, it's a weighing of equities, which you get to weigh, and the opinion of staff is irrelevant and inconsequential. But what is consequential is that procedure be adhered to. And we will make certain of that. And that process does require a vocal council and city manager to make sure that the guardrails of the process are properly adhered to, to protect constitutional due process rights, for which you are not normally in charge of, but I am a student of. So, it will require vocal presence of council in those meetings to ensure that the process is proper and that everyone's rights and responsibilities are provided for. And we say everyone, that means developer and anyone who speaks for or against the application. All rights will be afforded for, afforded by, and then you in turn will make the decision on what is in compliance with the comp plan and the future land use map.
Thank you. And then in anticipation of that date, I'd like to suggest to the commission, we consider a nine o'clock AM startup and keep your calendars free for the entire day. We want to be truly allow everyone the opportunity to speak and say their piece. I don't know if I'm going to be legal about this, but we try to limit folks to three minutes or less when they be present in front of the commissioner. We also try to encourage folks when they come that share new information with us. Try not to be repetitive about the same concerns, the same type of information. I'm sure I'll get some legal advice about whether I can do that or not at that hearing. But I want you all to fully understand that this is a start over. And at the end of that process, a decision has to be made. We're not, as a commission, allowed, willing to allow the 90 days to pass without making a decision.
The 90 days, does it, does the developer have to submit a new application in its starts? Or it started?
No. The 90 days commenced the day that the completed record was forwarded by the planning commission to the city manager, which was just a few days prior to your last meeting. So, we're roughly within two weeks
Correct.
of that timeframe.
And he or she and all representatives thereof of the applicant need to be present. We would strive, stress the importance of that. But we're going to follow guidelines. That's not mandatory, but we would strongly encourage that all those folks be present.
That's, that's correct. There would be an expectation that the, all parties would be here present for that hearing to take place. We should also note that, Mayor, it would, due to the public interest in the event, it wouldn't be unusual for there to be a sheet for someone who wished to speak either for or against would sign in to ensure proper recognition by the chair to be able to speak at that meeting. And I would say it was also the type of matter that someone could probably call into City Hall once it's made known. If they desire to speak, they will probably be able to have their name of record. So, we should get that out to the public now. So, if there's a desire to speak, based upon my review of the record and comments at the previous meeting, some may have felt like they didn't have that opportunity. So, it should be reiterated tonight that they will have the opportunity in, either in person to sign up or by calling City Hall with advance notice at the appropriate time. That's not now, but after the meeting is scheduled and noticed, then we know when it is, then it would, you would be able to call City Hall and get on the list of potential speakers.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions about the process?
Nope. I think that's a good, good motion that Commissioner Peak made.
You also volunteered to provide lunch, though, right?
I will provide lunch. Pop cards for everybody.
Okay. Then if there, if there are no further comments, then to end the discussion, the Chair would call for the question. And Madam Clerk, I'd like to do a roll call vote on this one, please.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sarris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank the commission, too, for reviewing the record in totality. I know that's not a small task. And it took us a long time last time to give an overview of what your roles and responsibilities are. However, your, your disciplined review of that has put us on track to handle this matter in efficient, effective way in legal compliance, and we appreciate your prompt review of it.
And I, I don't know if I said this earlier, but I also want to let folks know that I have been to the property. I've been on site, and I would probably go back to visit the site again when the weather's hopefully dried out a little bit. But I'm going to do that again, though. Okay? Let, let's go to the next item, then. Oh, man, no. Wait, wait, wait. I thought they'd all volunteered to do lunch, folks. They're all leaving, man. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Dr. Weston's class, Center College class, Making a Better Society.
Hello. I'm Beau Weston. I teach sociology at Center. And this term, I'm teaching a course called Making a Better Society. And for the past month, the class has been working with the offices of the city in teams on projects from those offices. So, from the city engineer, the stormwater coordinator, planning and zoning, and parks and recreation. And they, each of those teams has a report, a recommendation to make. One person from each of those teams will come up and speak here on each of their points. And we have a longer version of this, a PowerPoint with this, with a text, which we have given to the staff as well. And they will, I hope, find it useful and do things with it. So, without that further ado, the first team should come on up. Who's up?
And you all be sure you identify yourselves. Give us your name, your classification, your serial number, your social security number, your rank, and whatever else you want to tell us about yourself. But, oh, yes, we need to get Commissioner Holland back in. No, let her stay out there and suffer. Better get Commissioner Holland back in here. She's out there socializing with the crowd now. Ma'am, you can go ahead. You can start it.
Hello. My name is Odio Clements. I'm here on behalf of the Stormwater Coordinator's Office. I am representing myself, as well as two other teammates, Liz Dickerson and Teresa Curry. And we, over the past couple of weeks, have been working on retrofitting a retention basin. As a little bit of a background, a retention basin has, purpose is to hold and slowly release storm water to the surrounding areas to, to help prevent overwhelming downstream waterways. This retention basin is particularly useful for filtering water from the development, specifically the Walmart and surrounding areas that are developed over there. The retention basin in question that we studied itself is in the southeastern part of Danville. It is in a neighborhood on the streets of East Madison Avenue and McKinley Avenue. And it was experiencing a lack of maintenance over the past couple of years. The basin was built in about 2009, and as a result, it has not undergone any maintenance since that point. It became overwhelmed with invasive cattail species, and as a result, was having trouble regulating the amount of water downstream and causing issues with flooding to the waterways following the basin itself. We worked with MJ Decker, the Stormwater Coordinator, to propose a plan going forward of how to best redesign or refurbish, or retrofit, for lack of a better word, the basin itself. In the past, the basin has already undergone the removal of some cattails and is, we're currently in discussions with some contractors, seeing if we can redesign the topology of the land itself, because there has been erosion sediment that has been deposited in the basin that has changed its overall structure. So, in an effort to refit the basin itself, we are hoping to refurbish the basin. And then afterwards, we would like to propose putting in native plants to help with the water filtration system. We have put together a map, which I can give to you all. You can pass that to whoever would like to see it. But we've proposed a map of different kinds of plants that we recommend putting into the basin itself. As you can see, this is the graph that was made for the design of the original basin itself. And we have overlaid proposed zones and regions, which we recommend putting specific native plants. These plants, we had done extensive research on the, which kinds of native plants would be best in this area, as well as what nurseries we can source these out of, and if there are any possible grants to help with the planting of this and restoration of this basin itself. We also have made this map in the hopes to present a maintenance plan going forward so that the basin itself does not fall under disrepair in the future years. We hope that in this case, that this basin can provide a domino effect for the water quality in the surrounding areas. And we hope that it will also provide a map on how to better restore other retention basins. to better restore other retention basins in Danville itself. Thank you.
You said you worked with him?
Yes.
You survived that?
Yes, it was quite wonderful, actually. Yeah.
Questions or comments on this presentation?
No, this is great. I would like for you to look at all the subjects.
Gotcha.
Did you come across anything you weren't expecting, really? I mean, just that...
In terms of anticipating kind of problems and things like that, I think that the surprising factor was how invasive the cattail species were. They have a rocking lateral root system that makes it incredibly difficult to remove, and so the removal of that was very extensive, and there's actually some cattails that are slightly growing back already because they are so invasive. So we are working, when we pull out the soil itself, we'll be able to completely remove all of those cattails, and then we will be able to replant more native cattails to the area, as they are very efficient in filtering the soil. But if they are not regularly maintained, they can overtake the surrounding wildlife, which is why we have proposed a maintenance plan here.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Caroline Locke, and I, as Dr. Beau Weston said, along with the rest of my classmates here today, are in his DLM 310 at Center College. Throughout this class, we read The Fifteen Minute City by Carlos Moreno. Moreno developed the concept of the Fifteen Minute City in response to the growing challenges of social fragmentation and poor quality of life in modern cities. His concept aims to reshape urban environments to be more human-centered, focusing on sustainable access to everyday necessities within 15 minutes of one's residence. One of the most notable aspects of this proposal is the promotion of active transportation, such as biking or walking, to combat car dependency and the resulting pollution. One way to achieve this is by planting tree canopies to provide shade around walkways. Moreno explains how trees are not just an aesthetic addition to a city, but are also tools to be used to create a more livable urban environment, and trees can be used to accomplish many goals, including moving cities to be healthier, more resilient, and more sustainable. My teammates Gavin Alfon and Grace Walker and I worked with Josh Morgan, the city engineer, to come up with a project that would mitigate a social issue in Danville. Amending the existing tree ordinance seemed the perfect way to apply what we've been learning throughout the semester to a city we deeply care about. The existing tree ordinance hasn't been revised since 1985. It is thus outdated, unorganized, and a bit confusing, which, of course, is an issue because the whole idea of this tree ordinance is to be easily understood by the general public. It is also confusing in the sense that it makes it difficult for the city to properly manage tree planting, care, and removal due to the unclear assignment of responsibility. If the city continues to operate with the existing tree ordinance, it could lead to many issues down the line, including ownership arguments, loss of biodiversity, public safety hazards, and the city ultimately having to spend more money than is really necessary on fixing damage to public and potentially private property. In order to mitigate these issues, we began our project by reorganizing the sections of the ordinance in a way we believed would be best understood by the average Danville citizen. This ensures that understanding and application of the ordinance is more intuitive for those without prior knowledge or experience reading legislation. We then used the foundation of the existing planting permit to propose three distinct permits, one for planting, one for adoption, and one for removal. While we primarily maintained the previous planting permit regulations, we created new permits and regulations for the adoption and removal of public trees. We thought it important to create a distinction between planting and adoption of public trees, as we imagined there would be instances in which one would want to take over the responsibility and maintenance of a pre-existing public tree. Thus, the adoption permit was created. Possession of this permit enables the holder to have full control and responsibility of the maintenance of the relevant tree. In order to qualify for an adoption permit, the desired public tree must abut the permit applicant's property. After an adoption permit application has been, has been submitted, the office of the city engineer will inform the applicant of it, of acceptance or rejection. If accepted, the permit will remain active for two years, after which the person may apply for a permit renewal, should the holder maintain ownership of the abutting property and abide by the proper maintenance of the tree. The idea behind the adoption permit is to create an opt-in option for those who wish to take over the maintenance and responsibility of a public tree. If there is no adoption permit on record for a particular tree, responsibility for maintenance shall default to the city. We also propose that the city shall be the default of responsibility for the removal of a tree regardless of planting or adoption permit status. Thus, our final proposal is the implementation of a removal permit. If an individual wishes to remove a tree for any particular reason, then a removal permit is required, which would be granted by the office of the city engineer. Our goal with these proposed amendments is to convey a uniform understanding of the tree planting process so that Danville citizens may participate in bringing Danville one step closer to an ideal city, as trees and tree canopies enhance walkability, reduce the urban heat island effect, and transform urban spaces from bland to vibrant. We hope that our work will serve as a foundation for countless other future ideas. For example, the implementation of planting grants, which would provide funds to citizens wishing to plant trees, spurring more community engagement in the growth and upkeep of the wonderful city of Danville's trees. Thank you.
And you all worked with Josh Morgan, you said?
Yes, we did.
And you survived that one, too, right?
Yes, we did. It was, it was a very amazing experience.
Wow. Nobody ever said that about you, Josh. That's a first. Do you have a, like, a written copy of those ideas you have or anything?
We had submitted a copy of all of our written things to Josh, so he has that.
That explains why we don't have a copy.
Yes.
So it would come back maybe in the form of an ordinance for us, to our old ordinance and review it?
Yeah, I really think it's kind of the, a start of something that we needed to do anyway. Like I told, they, they've really done something practical here that we can kind of take forward. So, yeah. I don't, I wanted, I think one thing we wanted to clear, make sure it's really clear, this only applies to trees that are in, on public property. So public right-of-way, public parks. So if it seemed like we were going, going after privately-owned trees and in private property, that was not the case.
All right. That was helpful.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions for this young lady?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
There are three groups or four groups? Did he say four groups?
Four.
Four groups?
Hello, I am Lindsey Browning. I'm a junior at Center, and I'm obviously in Dr. Weston's class, and I'm one-third of the group that chose to work with the Planning and Zoning Committee. The others are Matty Vandevaner and Carter Smith. To begin, our overall mission with working with the Planning and Zoning Committee was to focus on improving the relationship between the Planning and Zoning Committee and the community of Danville and Boyle County. So to begin that, a study conducted by Kentucky Housing Corporation showed a projected housing deficit of 2,505 units by 2029 here in Danville, which is obviously a very big issue. 2,505 units. So as we saw that, we decided that we needed to address that crisis, and to do that, we had to strive to encourage development here in every, of every kind. So rigid zoning restricts land use and inhibits creative development, and to encourage development, zoning must be made more flexible to allow thoughtful changes to the zoning ordinance. So one of the major ways that we can increase that flexibility is by minimizing public backlash. So sometimes concerned, concerned neighbors attempt to fight future developments, and most often, that backlash is related to fear and confusion more than just like genuine disagreement. So our main focus for this was to develop QR codes that could be placed on signage, which would allow for residents to easily access the materials that they have concerns about. These QR codes will provide information to individuals in the community about what is coming to the area and how it can potentially affect their property value. By placing a QR code on proposed zone, zone change signs, we will be able to address public questions more efficiently. So rather than the fear of the unknown change, neighbors will be able to learn about the proposed changes on their own and in terms they can understand. We also focused on adding developmental snapshots to the web shot, to the website that the QR code takes you to and to the banners outside that are placed in areas with zone changes. Furthermore, developmental snapshots are fundamental to making the success, and I have some of those snapshots for you guys today. So these developmental snapshots will be a collaborative effort from the developer and the committee. We don't want to add more work to the committee, so a lot of this is planned to be like a joint process. And this will show off important details, such as the proposed zone change, any associated property plots, building plans for the proposed development, and as well as the developer's contact information. So there's a process, we, like, went to a four-step process, and beginning that would be changing the way that planning and zoning operates within the committee and with the public, and this would allow for a more transparent approach to zone changes and future development. And then the next step to implementing this would be, and making sure it works, is doing quarterly public meetings and check-ins, and this would allow for planning and zoning to evaluate how well the new due process is working on both sharing information and bettering public relations. And then a third step is something not necessarily required for developers, but having those developmental snapshots that you guys have in your hands, which are curated from the developers, could be a potential modification that could really help clear up that confusion. And then lastly, it's ensuring that all parties are adequately satisfied by new developments implemented by planning and zoning, and this is key to building a better committee and, like, bettering public relations, which we see this issue a lot, even with, like, the agenda we saw first. And honestly, taking that forward and, like, bettering the relations will help a lot of people out, especially you guys, so... Thank you.
Questions or comments?
That's probably the toughest of all the subjects to tackle, planning and zoning.
Who'd you work with in planning and zoning?
Well, because there wasn't, like, anyone directly available for most of our research, Josh took us over and helped us and gave us direction, so...
You survived Josh, too, then, right?
What did you say? First item was for change, you said, the second was a quarterly public meeting?
Yeah, so the first one would be just changing the way that planning and zoning operates within the committee, and with that, the public would allow for, like, a more transparent approach. So it's just like beginning here, essentially.
I love the QR code idea, and I hope you can share that with the interim planning director and planning commission.
Yeah, thank you.
That's Josh, isn't it? Other comments or questions? That was great.
All righty, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
One more group? And before you all get dismissed from Dr. Weston, we'd like to get a picture of you all up in front of the commission, and we might have a little token of appreciation for you.
Thank you.
I'm a junior at Center College, and my groupmates and I, Nick and Sasha, were working with Tommy Barton of the Parks and Rec Department. And so the question we were asking was, what do the people of Danville, including Center College students, want to see added and improved about Henry Jackson Park? So we got 205 respondents from April 7th to April 21st, from residents within close proximity to Jackson Park, and residents within driving distance from Danville, Boyle County residents and Center College students, as well as other residents. Some of the most important potential park improvements that we saw was that people wanted more permanent bathrooms, improved trails, and more tables, shelters, drinking fountains, and trash cans, so that people are able to spend more of their time at the park instead of just going for, you know, an hour or two. People want to spend more time at the, at Henry Jackson Park. And so some of the least important potential improvements that we found were improved entrance and entrance signage, a better access road, more parking. And I don't know the reason for this, but we, that is also, that's part of our potential solutions, because it's, it seems cost-effective, and so for the, four of the most popular amenities that we found, according to the survey, was more people wanted a splash pad, and 51% of them chose a splash pad, which is a little over 100 out of the 205 respondents that we had. For the second most popular, people wanted events and programs at the park, and this was around 45%, so around 90 people chose this option. For the third most popular, we found pickleball courts, and 41% chose this option. And for the fourth most popular amenity, people wanted an outdoor exercise area, so that, that way they can get more exercise and have, you know, a fun way to spend their day at the park. Some potential solutions and events that we've came up with to implement into the park is, you know, improving the trails, because it would increase the accessibility for people with, you know, disabilities or people in wheelchairs, so that they can access more of the park themselves, instead of having to drive all the way around and try and make it to some of the other amenities that they're not able to from one area. We found, one of the other potential solutions we found is adding more tables, shelters, and permanent bathrooms, so that, like I said before, people can spend more of their time at the park instead of just an hour or two. The third solution, potential solution we found is gutting the tennis courts. Since more people want pickleball courts, we found gutting the tennis court, gutting the tennis courts, redoing them, and turning them into actual pickleball courts, and moving them somewhere else, because we would like to extend the access road as well from the south end of the park, so that people have access to the parking lot that's on Cross Hill Drive, as well as to increase the accessibility, as I said. Lastly, adding in a dog park, because it's an affordable option for the city, and it gives dog owners more options to take their dogs, since Millennium Park is in, their dog park is in disrepair, and it's overcrowded, so I know dog owners would like more of an option to take their pups to go walking, et cetera. And for some events that we found we could potentially do at the park is a picnic table competition. In Northern Kentucky, we found that they invited 25 local artists to come out and paint, paint picnic tables, and this increased, you know, more, this increased, like, the outreach of the park to the actual residents, and invited more of the community to come and spend the day at the park, you know, painting and making it a friendly competition. And so we found, we thought, why not do this here? Another thing we thought would be bringing a woodcarver out to the park and cutting down the dead ash trees that are in the park, because they pose a safety hazard to people that are walking the trails and are just playing in the park. And so we found bringing a woodcarver to carve some beautiful designs after it is cut down would increase, like, the beautification of the actual park itself and improve the safeness of that, of the park. And so please reach out to us if you have any more questions or like to discuss this further, or more specifically, if you would like a breakdown of what specific residents that live closer to the park would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Wow. Questions and comments? Jackson Park, man. Well, the number one didn't surprise us at all. Yeah, we've all said more.
I appreciate you putting a focus on Jackson Park, because plenty of park can easily get overswelt, so that's good. Was there any comments on existing amenities, disc golf, playgrounds?
We have talked about improving the signage of the actual disc golf signs, because they're in total disrepair. There are some signs that have just holes all in them and are hard to read, and so making new signs, new signage for the disc golf would increase the actual use of the disc golf course, because if you actually look at the signs, you probably would not know which, which sign was for which tee or whatever. And so there's not even a sign for par eight. Sorry, I'm, I'm new to the terminology about disc golf. I don't play disc golf, so forgive me. But there's not even a sign for, yeah, the eighth hole, sorry. So adding in a sign for the eighth hole and increase, or improving the signage for the other holes would be a good addition to the actual park itself. And, sorry, as someone who, you know, is a Danville resident, born and raised here, I would like to see a renovation of the actual softball field to its infrastructure, because I used to play softball at the fields when I was a kid, growing and into middle school, until they built the new ones behind the Bait Middle School. And I would like to see more of a, you know, renovation of the actual infrastructure that's there, because I would like to be able to go and play. there, because I would like to be able to go and play softball again at the Henry Jackson Park as well, because it, it's still, the field is still there, so it could be used for something, and so I would like to see that.
Good point. Yep.
Thank you. I, I mean, I would like to see all, all this. I'm excited that you all come up with such great ideas and just impressed. Just, yeah, just to have us all.
All the groups, so Josh and I talked about it a little bit. Josh will want to brag on them, and I, but I will too. All the ideas I've heard have been really good. And, and so we appreciate the hard work, and it shows, and your all's intellect that you're developing, your skills that you're developing at Center is showing, and they show in this project, so good job.
Thank you.
Your group survived Tommy Barton, right?
They did work, they did more work in three weeks than we usually take, takes us three years to do these things. So, yeah, they, when they first proposed something, they were like, oh, there's no way we'll get this done in time. And they got it done in time. We, you know, so they, you know, they did their presentation last week, like on this survey, they did their presentation like two days after we closed the survey, so they took all the data and got it all put together. So they, they've all done an amazing job, and, you know, it's, it's kind of cool for me to just pop in once a week for like 15 minutes and talk to them, and then all of a sudden, the next week, they have all this work done. So it's been, it's been a pleasure for us as well.
I would like, I mean, I hope we can implement some of it, not just put it on shelves, because it's great.
The idea of the tree discussion has been one we've had for a while, trying to figure out what to do with some of the trees. There were some good ideas there.
Like Jackson Park?
Jackson Park has got some terrific ideas to it, and so we appreciate those.
Any tree carvers in town?
Yeah, that's awesome.
Professor Weston?
To take a picture right now.
Yes.
Other homework to do.
Homework for your class or other classes?
We need to be there too.
Okay.
I get it.
Thank you all very much. Thanks, Dr. Weston.
Hey, wait, where y'all going? Y'all can't leave? Come back here. They got homework. Well, alright, let's go. Alright, next on our agenda as we move along is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Chair will act to entertain a motion to approve our minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Any additions, corrections, deletions? Here and none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next item is a banner request for Mental Health Month. Commissioner Callow, you have that one, right?
What's that?
You have the proclamation for Mental Health Month?
I do.
Well, yeah.
Mayor, we skipped the banner request.
I did?
Yes.
Oh, I sure did, didn't I? There's a banner request for Mental Health Month. I still have a proclamation, didn't I?
I move to approve the banner request for Mental Health Month.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, that's my last mistake for today. You're right, okay. And we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. Commissioner Searle, you have that one, right?
Now we got something, now we got something to talk about, right? Okay, with just a few corrections, the proclamation Arbor Day 2025, whereas pollution and environmental degradation of all forms has major negative impacts on the economic and social well-being of all persons and communities, and whereas we recognize the environmental, aesthetic, and economic benefits of trees and forests along the riparian zones of waterways and urban areas, and whereas Clark's Run, Hanging Fork, and Dix River watersheds influence the integrity of water in Harrington Lake, and ultimately the quality of municipal water supplies in our area. And whereas water is vital to all forms of life, safe drinking water is essential to human life, and water plays an important role in world and national economies. And whereas Danville is recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a tree city, and whereas local citizens have organized at the Danville Boyle County Earth Day Festival on Saturday, April 26th, at Constitution Square. So furthermore, let it be known that the Danville Kentucky City Commission hereby encourages residents and business institutions hopefully participated on Saturday, April 26th, in celebration of Arbor Day and Earth Day. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor J. Atkins and a Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville hereby pledges this 28th day, April 2025, to actively pursue public policy and public education initiatives to assure a sustainable and just future for all our citizens.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, approves the Arbor Day proclamation. Next, we have a proclamation in honor of Historic Preservation Month.
Real quickly, before you move on, what are we gonna do with this? Should we want to hand it over to somebody like Bo? He's a tree city veteran. I'll look for a direction over here, or we're just gonna hang it here?
Normally, just hang it here. It's up to you, though, if you want to do something more specific. We can just hang it here.
We did recognize you, Bo.
Historic Preservation Month, Commissioner Callow, you do have that proclamation, sir.
Whereas preservation of Kentucky's historic buildings and sites is a proven economic development tool that creates jobs, attracts investment, revitalizes downtown and neighborhoods, stimulates heritage tourism, fosters new business development, assists affordable housing, increases property values, and improves the economic climate of communities, and whereas preservation has been established as a public policy under the National Historic Preservation Act, which provided the framework for the Kentucky Legislature to create the Historic Preservation Office in the late 1966, and amendments to the Act in 1980 enabled successful partnerships between federal, state, and local governments. Whereas the Kentucky Heritage Council State Historic Preservation Office is responsible for the identification, identification, protection, and preservation of archaeological sites and the historic and cultural resource throughout the Commonwealth in partnership with elected officials, community leaders, advocates, nonprofit organizations, and interested citizens. And whereas the City of Danville has been a certified local government for many years in partnership with the Kentucky Heritage Council, National Park Service, and local nonprofit preservation organizations, and has established preservation as a public policy and worked to meet federal, state, and local historic preservation objectives. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for all communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And because of the wealth of Kentucky's historic buildings, sites, structures, and places, it is important that the citizens of the Commonwealth recognize and value this heritage. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor James J. Atkins and the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Historic Preservation Month.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I'll move to it, please. The proclamation for Historic Preservation Month.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor? Oh, Ms. House, you want to stand up and make a comment or two? Do you have a visitor with you?
I do. This is Commissioner Gary Nogle from the Danville Architectural Heritage Board. We would like to thank you commissioners for recognizing historic preservation. This is vitally important for our community, and as we know, Danville is the first city. So it is extremely important for us to recognize and protect our cultural heritage here in Danville. And I would just like to say, you guys got really a very cool place. Let's protect it and do the right things for it. It will make you money and do good for the city in the long term.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and we want a good picture too, with all you all.
Alright. Give you the picture then?
Yeah.
Do it now.
I just, just wanted to make a comment to show where your commitment to historical, your historical heritage has meant something to me, besides getting a phone call. There we go. Just a second. We're new to Danville. We moved here, retired here from San Diego, California, five years ago. And we came here specifically because of the downtown. We love the idea of going back to an old downtown, and the history, and, you know, the improvements that you've made to Main Street, I think, show a lot of forethought and vision about where Danville can go in the, in the next decades. You know, history, to us, we had no history in San Diego. The only, the only thing that was of any historical significance was how, how high was the surf yesterday? And, you know, I think, I think the quality of life is a little bit deeper than that. And we've really enjoyed our time, our time here in Danville, and really enjoyed working with Joni on the Architectural Board, and we're gonna keep, keep on doing the best we can.
What, what brought you to Danville specifically, from San Diego? I'm just always curious about what brings people.
Well, we, we were, obviously, we were looking for a big change.
Right.
We'd, we'd lived in, you know, the perfect climate and the perfect scenery, but we were looking for full, Four Seasons, very important. We were looking for a community that had a lot of pride in their community. We saw that in Danville. And the historical structures, I'm, I'm an architect, so I have an appreciation for that. And so, you know, we just all clicked together, and it's been a rewarding experience.
Excellent. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
We'll put her right next to the.
Forever and always.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I present at the next board.
Alright.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Next, next item on our agenda is we have two appointments to the Ethics Board. One is, one is the Secretary of Defense, and the second one is a new appointee. What's your pleasure? One is Dr. Bo Weston, who's the senior secretary, and then the second is. He said I'm not on, I'm sorry. Thank you, I'm sorry. Two new appointments to the board, Ethics Board. Dr. Bo Weston and Ms. Julia, it's G E R W E. I pronounce it Gerwee, but I'm probably missed. Gerwee? Okay, Gerwee, okay. So commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll move to approve the two Ethics Board appointees, Mr. Weston and Ms. Gerwee.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Does it matter if I think that Dr. Weston has sketchy character?
Well, you're entitled to your opinion, that's all I can tell you.
You'll be a board member, not an alternate now, right? Correct?
Yes.
You'll be a board member, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
All those in favor that approve that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Again, again. Okay, next item is Resolution 2025-042801, a Boyle County bust agreement from Mr. Tommy Barton for Parks and Rec.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This is our yearly contract with, with a memorandum of understanding with the Danville, or I'm sorry, Boyle County Board of Education, Danville, Boyle County Parks and Rec, and the City of Danville. And the gist of it is, this is our transportation for our day camp. So we, we were increasing our number of day campers, and with this inflation, it looks like it's, this is just an estimated number, but it's looking around $6,235. Last year, it came to $5,081, so it's pretty similar, but we're gonna be moving a lot from Jeannie Rogers and Bunny Davis a lot this year.
Thank you, sir. Chair, entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
I move for approval of Resolution 2025-04-2801.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
How many, how many more did we add to?
We're hoping to be at a hundred, or I think before, we were in the mid-sixties.
Yeah, great, thank you.
People are waiting online to sign up.
Yeah, yeah. It usually fills up within an hour.
Yeah. It's been a successful program.
Coming up.
You're going to start it from Jeannie Rogers this year?
Correct, they will, which will, it will help the pickleball also because we had a kind of a, everything happened at once at 8:00 AM there at the pickleball courts, the drop-off and pickleball. So now, the drop-off will be at Bunny Davis, and most days, they'll be picking up at, I'm sorry, drop-off will be at Jeannie Rogers, and the pickup most days will be at Bunny Davis.
Great job.
Yep.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can we create a motion? Do y'all vote?
Here we go.
Do we vote? Do we vote? All right, all right. All those in favor of the Boil County Bus Agreement as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Resolution 2025-04-2802, Paylocity Contract Agreement, I mean, Contract Amendment, Mr. Boil.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So in front of you, you have an addendum to the city's current human resource software Paylocity. The addendum's needed for, to implement updated carrier feeds for our new Denon Vision Carrier, Humana, that's going into effect May 1st. The reason for this is to streamline elections through our software into the carrier websites in the same fashion and manner that we have our current plans. And so, in order to do that, an addendum is required to be added to the current contract that you have in front of you. Estimated cost of that is $2,616, which $1,500 of that is a one-time implementation fee. And then, $1,116 would be your annual service fee for those. And again, we have that in place with our prior Denon Vision Carrier, and this is required to make that change based on our new benefit year changes we made May 1st.
Thank you, sir. Chair, will I continue to entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2025-04-2802.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
No, it's not with Humana, it's with Paylocity too.
It is, yeah. It's Payloc, it's essentially, it's a scope of work added to the contract to build out the carrier feeds with Humana. Yep. All our Humana contracts are already assigned.
Right, and no fee, no increases with that.
Correct, yeah. This is just solely a software admin fee to streamline the process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next is an IT surplus. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In your packet, you have two lists from IT that, of items that they are asking to surplus through GovDeals.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move for approval of Resolution 2025-04-2803.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone want to identify the items on the list? Everybody look at me, what are you talking about? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, you have the next one, 28-4-2804 Cemetery Software Proposal.
Yes, as you all know, staff has been talking for, I think, about three years now about getting, excuse me, getting cemetery software for our cemeteries. Mainly, our goals were to update our record keeping, have it all in one central location through software, and then also making the cemeteries more accessible to the public through software. So we conducted three different meetings, Zoom meetings, demos with web cemeteries, Chronicle, and SEM sites. And after those demos were completed, we felt that web cemeteries met our needs the most out of the three, and so we're recommending going with web cemeteries. There is initial startup cost of $12,459, which will be on this year's budget. This is to get us on their queue. They have, they work with several different cities, so to start this, to get us in their queue to implement our data, we have to sign the contract and provide that cost. And then, once our site goes live, we're looking at about a year, maybe less than that, depends on how quickly the implementation goes. And then, there will be a monthly fee of $499. So we're just asking that you all approve this.
Chair, will I entertain a motion on the cemetery software proposal?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-04-2804.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
I just, I'm just curious, what, what's different about this one than the others? Or just seemed easier to use?
They're all kind of similar, but this one, I think, I don't know if Josh and Lee want to speak up because they were in those two. It would just, on my, from my perspective, it seemed like an easier software. It was more user-friendly. And we really liked their team that they had to offer. And the site, once it's live, everything, once something is in the books as like a payment plan, it locks that in so people can see what we have currently available in our lots. And it's, it's live constantly, so it's always updated as soon as we log something in. And I don't know if you all want to chime in or not.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the other softwares we looked at, some of, so it was kind of a Goldilocks kind of thing where some didn't have enough information, and then others had way too much information that we would have to keep track of, it was going to add a lot of work to us. And then, this, this was affordable compared to the others. I think this was the most affordable on an annual basis as well, once we, once we're up and running. So we just, it was kind of a no-brainer to select this one out of the ones we looked at.
Yeah, and they also, they automate a lot of their processes in ways that you expect in 2025, that we don't have the capability of with our current, like, process and software. So for instance, when Ashley needs to create a deed for a plot at the cemetery, she has to manually update it and change a lot of things for that particular customer, whereas this software will create a template. When they sell the plot, that will kind of auto-generate the deed, it'll auto-generate the payment plan, it'll auto-generate the contracts, and then the staff would review those and approve those. It also gives them the ability to, to pay through the portal. It gives Ashley the ability to see exactly when the plot has been purchased. So there's, there's a lot of individuals currently in our process, and it's a lot of individuals having to communicate, and sometimes a step gets left out, unfortunately, right? And so I think for, for their part, it's going to streamline that process quite a bit.
And it also has the ability, so they'll map our cemeteries as well, and it kind, I think it used Google Maps, maybe? I think it walk, it can walk somebody to a specific grave. So you can get on there if you're looking, so that saves you a call, like, instead of calling us and saying, can you look up this person? And we have to dig through all the records to find exactly where they're at. They can go in, type this person's name, and it will take them, it'll drop a pin on this person's grave and take them right to it.
That was my question. I wondered, you know, for the public, what will that do? And that, that sounds like a...
You all can see in the paperwork, this really, I mean, from a public-facing perspective, it's going to be a complete change, and we're really excited about, it's kind of taking us into modern times, finally. So we're, not only is it going to clean up our records and clean up how we organize things and make us less likely to something get missed in those processes, it's the, the public-facing side, as far as looking for graves, going, getting on our site, researching and doing those kind of things, kind of any kind of genealogy is going to be so much better. It's, we're pretty excited about it.
When, when's it going to be up and running? Do we know?
So, when, once we sign the contract with them, we go into their queue, because like I said, they have a waiting list essentially. And then, they said implementation would take somewhere between six to eight months, depending on the extent of the mapping. I think that's the biggest hurdle that we have to get over is the mapping of both cemeteries. So I said roughly a year before we'll go live, but like Josh said, we're really excited about it, especially from a record-keeping standpoint, we're really excited about it.
Well, maybe in, I mean, just a suggestion, maybe a year out or when we're getting ready to go live, it'd be nice to have a, something at the commission meeting to let people know what's going on.
They have, they have marketing materials that they're willing to send us when we get ready to go live, to kind of show the public what it has to offer. We can certainly do that here and post it on Facebook so that people are aware of the changes that are coming.
Yeah. If you've got Josh excited, let's pass it real quick, right? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the software, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is municipal order 04-2801, 2025, Signature Authorization. Ashley?
Yes, this is a municipal order authorizing who can sign and attest the mayor's signature and certain documents that in lieu of the city clerk's absence need to be signed. So we're just asking you all to approve this municipal order to authorize those signatures.
You called out some names you're going to be signing?
In your list, a nodary public can attest the mayor's signature, city manager's being authorized to sign minutes, and any records that need certification and lien releases.
Okay. Is there a motion for this municipal order?
I move to accept Municipal Order Number 04-2801-2025.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Okay, the next item is, man, First Reading of Ordinance Number 2046, 784 South 4th Street Zone Change. Chair, will you entertain a motion? We can discuss it, then we can have the first reading. Is there a motion?
I move for approval of the first reading of Ordinance 2046.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, would you read that for us, please?
Yes, this is the first reading of Ordinance Number 2046, an ordinance changing the zone from two-family residential RM2 to highway business HB for approximately 0.155 acres, more or less, of real property located at 784 South 4th Street in the city of Danville, Kentucky.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Saris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, right behind the resolution, you see the recommendation from the Planning Commission. And towards the bottom, there are four bullet points. I say this for anecdotal purposes. The four points that are mentioned there will be the basis of your decision regarding the Shaker Town Road matter, either for or against, but those are the four legal requirements that you will utilize in your analysis. So I point that out as to show you what our standard form is, which is in compliance with the law, and will be the lens in which the public hearing is conducted at a later date.
My iPad sat down, I couldn't see it. Well, I'll look at it later. Okay, thank you, sir. Next item is First Reading of 2047, and that's at 714 Houstonville Road, Zone Change. Is there a motion on this one?
I'll move to approve the first reading of Ordinance 2047.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do you want to read that for us, please?
Yes, this is the first reading of Ordinance Number 2047, an ordinance changing the zone from two-family residential RM2 to highway business HB for approximately 0.155 acres, more or less, of real property located at 714 Houstonville Road in the city of Danville, Kentucky.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call vote again?
Mayor Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Saris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Thank you all. Next item, the city manager report?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We'd like to point out that the intersection lighting on 2168 is a KYTC work in progress. That was asked at a commission meeting, but I wanted to verbalize that for those folks at home. May 11th is Mother's Day, so let's please remember that for all those mothers out there. May 26th, of course, we want to set the reminder that City Hall is closed for Memorial Day. We do have, and I would, I would urge you to follow the budget calendar, we, as we do have, May tends to have several budget meetings, and, and so we'll just remind you of that. Big thing is, it's spring, we know there's a lot of debris left over from some of the storms, we, we know there's some garbage in different places and things like that. As you get those complaints, high weeds, please forward those to us, and we'll get appropriate staff on that. Thank Melanie, the last week, the 24th, we had a civic engagement, Local Government Series meeting. The next one, we'd like to reconfirm, is May 22nd. That's a, and it will involve parks, boatworks, and infrastructure. We appreciate Melanie taking the lead on that, and certainly, that's a terrific program. We did, on the 18th, we had, we had a good event in Lexington where we accepted the Streetscape Award. Certainly, there was a lot of comments that, from that industry of folks that have visited Danville since our project is completed, and after they were made aware of some of the recent acknowledgements we've gotten. And so, it continues to be exciting to be, to be exposed to those on the outside looking in, in at our downtown. The police and fire pension funds, we had our annual meeting. The budget process, you'll hear this, but I wanted to confirm for you that we will have an allocation, a small amount, it is, it is down significantly because of the performance of the, the fund, for lack of better words. So our, our recommendation at two, the city commission is a 2%, 2.9% COLA plus 1% for the retiree benefits, to increase those retiree benefits by those amounts. There was an EDA meeting last week, and something that we'll talk more about is adding a, a master plan to the EDA's property on, at the Reading property. It looks more and more like we have to consider transportation, certainly outside of our boundaries, as Parable Road is sitting to the north at Bluegrass, and there, there will be, in the future, a lot of commentary on, on what that looks like along Parable Road with Cabinet and whatnot. So that is progressing, and, and so I know that we'll, we'll have follow-up meetings on that, but hopefully, we'll, we'll report something back in a few weeks and, and some progress for the EDA there. The, we did participate in the shift process today, so the East Danville, we did get to, to observe that. I think the mayor's chair of that Transportation Committee with the ad, and he did, represented Danville well today, and we appreciate getting the invitation to go. We'd like to focus us on a change order, that was a late addition change order, we added to the packet, and we are asking you to authorize the change order number one for the Tower Hill Tank Painting Contract. That contractor is the same contractor that we sought cleaning services from for the other two contract, or the other tanks that we have that are elevated. They are climbers, and so to clean those effectively, you need to be able to climb. We, looking at the timing of it, if we can get this authorized, then we will, we will get really positive pricing because they are already here in town working. Our fear was, in two weeks, they would be done with the project, and the crew that would do the cleaning would be gone. So we're, we are bringing this forward to you tonight. The total cost to clean Miggs Lane in Junction City, and then 4th Street Tower, on 4th Street will be $16,000. We would ask that you add that to the Tower Hill contract as change order number one as presented. The last time we had those painted, it, it would be more than double that. It is a significant amount. In fact, we think 4th Street would cost about $30,000 if we separately sought pricing for that. So it, it is a good opportunity to take advantage of that, and I apologize for the late addition to the agenda. Hopefully, that's a sufficient explanation for you. So we would ask that you approve that change order number one. So we would ask that you approve that change order number one.
That's, that's an excellent price, for sure, so, yeah.
I move for approval of change order number one.
Second.
Well, thank, thank both of you, right? Okay. Uh, any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of change order number one, in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars, for the painting of two additional water towers?
The washing of two additional water.
Washing, that's a paint wash. Well, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all for that, and that's all I have. Do y'all have any questions for me?
The tower by Chick-fil-A looks really good.
Yes.
And are we gonna clear out any of the shrubs or trees around? Okay, good.
Yes, we're working on that. So, so that, that tank will get mold on it? And, and so, because of the nature of the water, it's colder and they're where it's at. So what we're hoping is that the, the pattern that, that is being added to it right now will, will mask that a little bit, just by the nature of it. And, and, and it is intended to mimic the, the knobs and, and the sky to kind of let the tower blend into the, to the background. We, we're, we're trying not necessarily to call attention to it, but, uh, hopefully, hopefully that makes sense as you review it over the next few days.
Yeah, looks good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager?
Yeah, we do have a budget meeting, it's Thursday, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir. At this stage in our agenda, we have the second, here the public. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission for three minutes or less on items that are not on our agenda. Hold your, wait, wait just. What's your name?
My name is Glenn Ball, live at Slope Drive. Uh, this is a little different presentation. I'd like to thank the city, the mayor, Earl Coffee, and, and then Josh for the sidewalk on Slope, at Slope Avenue. Paraded up and down here for about three years to get that put in because it was really unsafe for those residents living in the six apartment complexes past North Lane, walking Slope Drive. So the sidewalk is a great improvement, and a lot of people use it. And I want to personally thank you all for getting that project done. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Justin Mason, I just live in Streamland. I don't know whose idea it was to, to start testing those lights at the corner, or at the, at the intersection of Lexington and Third, Bergen. Seems to me like it's working. I've been through there quite a bit, you know, uh, busy hours. I kind of wanted to reserve judgment for that until I saw it at peak hours. I don't know what you're finding, but it seems to be working a lot better than what, what that crazy four-way was. So that's just my little input on that.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, you waited through all this media to tell us that?
No, I came for Streamland.
Well, you did it on a good note. The Streamland folks ended on a good note too. Thank you, sir.
We'll pass that on to the Cabinet.
Yes.
That's just what I've seen.
Oh, that's okay, that's good though, yeah.
Heard all positive.
I've heard good stuff from the other people too. Anyone else, is there any here to public?
I can't make it up.
Well, you can't talk to us then. Ms. Calhoun? Ms. Calhoun? Reroute her. Ms. Calhoun, come on. You've been gone for a good little while, we've changed all our rooms. If someone take her mic and charge her five dollars, you come back with the same old complaint.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Atkins, they need to reroute the streets these buses goes on. They really waste gas going around the same neighborhood two and three times before it take an hour and a half to get to Walmart.
Uh, what buses are you referring to, ma'am?
The blue bus, my bus.
You need to take that, well, somebody, we'll direct you where to take that complaint.
Who?
We'll have to redirect you on where to take that.
Yes, 'cause, uh, y'all should have asked.
That's not a city issue.
How come it ain't?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Happy Mother Day to everyone.
Thank you.
Bluegrass there, right? Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, comments from the city commissioners, updates and comments.
I was just gonna, um, mention the opening of the farmer's market and, um, Earth Day celebrations, it was, inspired the weather, really well attended.
Yeah. And tossing Jenny Rogers. So why you talking about tossing Jenny Rogers activity, wow. The Jenny Rogers goes along with that, that was poof.
Yeah.
Yeah, true. So farmer's market, Earth Day, and then the Jenny Rogers, uh, block party, open house, whatever you wanna call it, they was poof. Lots of kids and adults. Anyone else, some other things?
I just want to say thanks to the police department for handling the situation last weekend in Danville and making people feel safe.
Well, I, I was gonna save mine for last, but I had the privilege of having, uh, four meetings on my calendar today. And in all four of those meetings, I was accompanied by our city manager. And, you know, everybody should be saying sorry for you, but no, we had a great time. And he, he didn't want to be, he didn't want to be with me by himself all day long, so he, he drove Josh along, or one of them. But some good stuff was done today in the, in, on behalf of the city of Danville, and tonight's meeting is, is a part of that, good stuff that's being done on behalf of the city of Danville. So I want to thank you all for that, and thank you all for your preparation for tonight's meeting, and thank staff again for giving us all the good information, the Friday, or the Thursday, or before these meetings on Mondays, and we, uh, appreciate that. And then I have a, a lady back there that's sitting there, you can just wave at me that. She just turned her head back. Ms. Jenny, I want to say thank you for your willingness to step up into your next role pretty soon, your upcoming role. Commissioners want to say something about that? I've been waiting to get her, but it won't be long, you know, right?
Good luck.
Yeah. She's gonna step in to, uh, in the absence of our city clerk to help keep the five of us, but it's more importantly, keep the rest of the city staff in line while Ms. Ashley's gone for a while. So I want to say thank you for your willingness to do that. It was either step up and do that, or she was gonna retire, so we started. It was close, that's right. Okay, let's move on then.
I might expand real quickly on your Jenny Rogers.
Yes, sir.
A block party. It was well attended, in fact, they ran out of hamburgers.
Yes.
And that's a hundred, so they had to go back after more. So I think we're off to a good start with these block parties.
Yeah. Well, the, the thing about Jenny Rogers is that there were hundreds of kids and adults outside, but inside of the gym, you know, you saw three or four different groups of kids waiting to pick up, play pickup basketball games, and then the games room, and, uh, there were just several things inside going on too, really neat. Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's get this, okay. Next item is financials, pay the bills, or chairman entertain a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of two hundred twenty four thousand, six hundred and four dollars and ninety nine cents.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Josh distracted me.
Snag.
Any questions, any additions or deletions on our bills? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all, motion carries. And Marshall, thank you for waiting patiently. Last item, well, last item on our present agenda is Resolution, uh, twenty five, twenty twenty five oh four twenty eight oh five, sole source purchase. Is that my ox rebuild?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is in regards to efforts to maintain, um, proper treatment methodologies at the water plant and to restrict and reduce permit violations at the water plant. We have an existing, it's called a mixed oxygen generator. Uh, it generates chlorine in the drinking water system, uh, to maintain proper drinking water and disinfection byproducts reduction. So, long story short, that means it's used to keep the water clean and maintain residual chlorine throughout the system. It's a crucial part of our water treatment process. Uh, it's one of three units that we have to have. You have to have so many units based on your total capacity that the water plant generates. Uh, this is one of those three. We've had a failure of the units, we have to have it rebuilt. Total cost is ninety one thousand, five hundred dollars. Very expensive units.
I'd like to add too, this, this is part of, without getting into the detail because it is a claim, this will be part of an insurance claim. And so we don't know how that will play out, obviously, but, but we just want to make the commencement aware of that.
This is the most it could cost if they give.
Due, due to the specialized nature of the rebuild, it is considered a sole source.
So.
Which is why we're requesting approval.
Correct. We, we will, we have to get it fixed regardless of, of the claim process, yes.
Okay.
I'll move to approve Resolution number two zero two five, zero two, two eight, zero five.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments to staff?
Comment would be utilities, it's very important to us in the city, gotta keep things going.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor of resolution, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Next, the chairman would like to entertain a motion for adjournment?
Uh, Mayor, we need an executive session for personnel and litigation.
I try.
So close.
Okay, y'all, y'all gotta get on your stick, all right? So the chair, the chairman would entertain a motion for a very brief executive session. How about that?
Okay, personnel litigation. I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel pursuant to KRS sixty one point eight one zero one F, and for litigation pursuant to KRS six one point eight one zero one C.
Thank you, ma'am. Is, is there a second? Or died for lack of a second?
Second.
Oh, okay. Oh, Donna seconded, okay. Well, I appreciate y'all having a little fun, but, okay. If you're probably moving second, then we go into a brief executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Kevin and I say no.